My favorite setup.
Did you send me a message?
I'd like to be able to see if we do want to be in the future. I'd like to be able to see the faces of fellow council members as possible.
We have this, we have five or six different.
I know, and I really appreciate what you've done.
This is our first time. I would like to see some feedback. And kind of going back and watching the video and saying, that'd be more.
I just like to see their faces. It helps me.
I mean.
Body language is important, and you know that.
I'd like to call this Budget Workshop Meeting to Order. We have one item of business to discuss before we move on to our truth and taxation discussion. And that is to discuss, discussion of possible action regarding Resolution 18-127, declaring items from various city departments that are no longer of any value or use as surplus property and authorize the disposition of such. Brian Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor. As per our last council meeting, staff was directed to go back and update the surplus list in dealing with the move from the new, from the old Public Works Building to the new Public Works Building. We're in the process of moving. We started Monday at about 1:00. We've updated the list. These are the items that we are asking to be approved for surplus. A lot of these items are, I don't think they would survive a move. A lot of it's particle board, desks and stuff that are already in bad disrepair. So we're asking to surplus those items. And there's other items on there as you guys see in your council packets. That's it.
Additionally, it's my understanding that if council agrees to surplus these items, we will advertise to sell them. They're not much value, there's no value. We'll be lucky to give them away. We'll probably, likelihood, but those items we can't sell will probably be given to appropriate thrift shops to do what they think is best with them.
And everything I, my understanding is everything that was of any real value to the city has been repurposed to other departments? Is that correct?
That is correct. Anything that had any reusable value was given to other departments. There are other departments in this City Hall that required them. We've asked TNT and an agency that does sell city property, they came and looked at it and said it has no value to us. We don't even want to try to sell it.
Thank you. We'll open up for council member questions. And Councilmember Whitelock.
So I'm having a really hard time not believing that what we're doing is we bought a new house, so we're buying new furniture. Because we still have 16 desks, 41 chairs, forty, well, really 87 chairs, three bookcases, and a bank of lockers. So I'm still very frustrated about this process, and I have a question, and I don't know who will have this answer, but new furniture, I'm assuming, has already been purchased?
It was purchased at the time of the building's approval.
Good, that was before my time.
That was correct.
However, is that on a bond? Are we going to be paying for that furniture for how many years?
I'm going to ask Mr. Zobel.
I hope that we don't ever choose to do that again. I do not feel that is the best use of taxpayer dollars when we're buying furniture on, what is this bond, a 20 or 30 year?
Yeah, I believe it's 20-year bond.
That's really problematic for me, and, and I'm very disappointed. And, and these numbers, although they're better than the original ones, I'm not happy. And so I actually will probably vote no on surplusing it because I feel like I disagree. The pictures, the updated pictures we have, there is only one item on there that I wouldn't use in my own home. And maybe it's because I grew up poor and I'm not picky, but there's only one thing on there that I would say is unusable, so not happy. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just for my mind, everything that's listed here is what is not usable regardless of if we were going to a new building or staying here, these things would be pretty much gotten rid of. Is that about right, right? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Councilmember Whitelock brings up some good points, particularly financing furniture over a 20 years instead of just paying for it directly. But my question is on the break room chairs that looks, at least from the photograph I'm seeing, they're normal chairs that could use. Are those the same chairs we use in the community room? And can we just add it to that collection? Because they're the stackable chairs on that picture.
They are, they're our stackable chairs. A lot of them are, were from the old lunchroom in our Public Works Building. A lot of them are in bad shape. They're, the ones that we do, that are in good shape, we are keeping. We're not getting rid of them all, and we'll use those for different, if we have different events or whatever, but.
Okay, so that they're good, you're keeping them, you're not going to bring them over here to use in the community?
No, we'll store them in the Public Works Building. I mean, if we needed them over here, we'd bring them over here, but yeah, that's.
But the photograph I see is one of the better chairs there?
That is a decent looking one.
So, so wouldn't it be a good idea to take a picture of the bad chairs?
Uh, we are just trying to give examples. I mean, I, I understand that.
Thank you.
And I can entertain a motion regarding this resolution. Somebody like to make a motion? Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll preface this by saying I don't disagree with the comments about purchasing and things like that that have been talked about. However, this, that's not what's on the table here, so I will move to approve Resolution 18-127.
We have a motion. I will second the motion. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
But pass this for one.
Now I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules so that as we go through this meeting, we can have open microphones for anyone that would like to speak up at any particular time.
Second.
Though, we have a motion as second. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None. So with that, we'll turn the time over to our City Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is really, a really remarkable moment. Since 1985, the state of Utah has had a process in place, truth and taxation, that requires a city to go before its elected officials and prove to their satisfaction that the request that is being made is reasonable, transparent, understandable, and defensible. I think that's what Senator Howard Stevenson was asking for, looking for, and considering appropriate when the bill passed. The reality is, in the last 30 years, this city has seen exactly one prior truth and taxation process. As we sit at this table, there are only two individuals in this room that experienced it previously, prior to that, in 1988. That's Mr. Zobel and Richard Davis. So their contributions to this city have been 30 years plus. I've also asked them to sit with us today so that questions could be asked directly of the staff and those individuals specifically about maybe what happened in 88, what's happened in 2012, and how we find ourselves here in 2018. And I, I really wanted this to be an open mic work session, that if there are questions you have, fire away. If I don't have the answer, I'm going to turn to the staff and ask for their assistance. You can see that we also have additional staff here in the audience that will answer questions if they can't be answered right here behind me or at the table with me. I'm also going to indicate that right over, right over our shoulders, over above our head is a screen, the, the rest of the community Facebook will be seeing the same items that I'm going to be referring to. The first slide that I'm going to talk about is the purchasing power and the differences acquired in the last 30 years. In 1988, $1,000 is no longer worth $1,000 in 2018. In 2012, that same $1,000 was worth $521, and unfortunately, even yet today, it's gone down a little further. It's half that of the original $1,000, 476. The price of gas, and I do remember in 1988 that price, I was paying for that at the University of Utah where I was attending school, 93 cents a cent, a gallon. Today it's $3, and frankly, I think it's a little above 309, but that was the amount when we checked the prices just recently. The significance of that is the recognition that even Senator Stevenson recognized was inflation was going to change the value of dollars. As we proceed further away from that enactment date of 1985, I think it's important to consider what Senator Stevenson and his fellow senators and House members consider appropriate in this truth and taxation process. They anticipated, and it's been stated publicly and recently in a Salt Lake Tribune article, that the senator thought that as this procedure went forward, the dollars would be set that you could acquire from any resident based on their property value, and that the only way you could justifiably ask for more was this type of hearing that we're going to have on August 14th. You had to have the ability to defend and argue why it was appropriate to ask for that money that you're taking from individuals in the form of a tax. The senator went on to say that he anticipated after the enactment that it would be somewhere between five to eight years, every five to eight years, excuse me, that there would be a truth in taxation. It wouldn't be automatic. The purpose of that truth and taxation hearing to occur at that, at that regular occurrence of five to eight years was to adjust for inflation. Jesse also again addressed the issue of the population change that has occurred since 1988. City of West Jordan was comprised of 47,800 citizens. Jump forward nearly 24 years later, and that number certainly doubled, almost tripled to 108. That was your last truth and taxation hearing. Fortunately for us, Chris McConaughey, who serves on your body, was at that meeting and has shared with me some insight on what happened on that evening. We're trying to adjust for and be prepared for the evening of August 14th, given Councilman McConaughey's comments. The reality is, from 2012 to 2018, six years, I remind you of what Senator Stevenson said, five to eight, we're right in that timeframe. We're in the timeframe that the senator and the legislature anticipated you'd have a review process. There's been a lot of discussion about, well, you have 108,000 residents that are now almost 114,000. That's additional homes. Shouldn't that have accommodated the needs we have today? No, that's not happening. The individuals who have built new homes, and we do capture those property taxes, do not adjust for the cost of inflation. Those individuals who came here after 2012 are benefiting from having arrived here after that date. The proposed municipal tax increase is effective throughout this entire valley in a way that I've never seen it, and I suspect.
Excuse me, David, can you go back and explain why they're benefiting and how that benefit works?
I'm sorry, how, what?
Could you explain to us why people who bought their houses after 88 are benefiting and how that benefit works?
Well, if, well, they, I'm talking about 2012, not, in 1988, everybody who literally for 24 years paid property taxes based on $198, and the services you got in 1988 included full-time police and fire, you had access to parks, you had road maintenance, repair. So everybody who followed after 88, for 24 years, paid a price that would have been appropriate in 1988. By the time 2012 arrived, that wasn't a fair rate any longer. So that's the purpose of that truth and taxation, adjust for the inflation, bring those dollars back up, to collect more taxes from the property owners who are benefiting from those full-time services. From 2012 to the present, everybody who's arrived is benefiting from the truth and taxation in 2012 and not paying a current fair market rate of what those services represent.
So you're saying what they're paying is the 2012 rate, not the 2018 rate?
2018 rate doesn't exist until you have a truth and taxation hearing, and you folks decide whether or not you're willing to increase the tax.
So they are actually paying the 2018 rate because our 2018 rate is the same as the 2012 rate?
They're paying the 2000, 2000, sorry, did I say 2016? 2012 rate, which would have been set by, well, this is kind of why it's complicated.
You guys are on the same page.
Okay. As long as we're saying the same thing.
I, I, we do, thank you.
Okay. Let's see where, I was headed to the next slide. The significance of this slide is to, the yellow line, it's a little hard to see at this, at this point, you can blow it up later, that yellow line represents West Jordan. The far left is Tooele. They're looking at 115% tax increase on their property. I've never seen this magnitude of taxing truth hearings ever, and I think the reality is because it has been so hard, so difficult, and painful for elected officials to make this tough decision. Citizens are, can be merciless during tax increase discussions, but the reality is, it's across the entire valley, across the entire state. And the request that we're making in this instance of just under 20% is a very, I think, reasonable one, and as we proceed forward, I'll try to explain that further. Now, if, if any member of the staff feel like they can chime in or add something, please do so.
Then I don't have my glasses on. Can someone tell me where South Jordan is on there?
South Jordan is just a couple lines to the right, the small, here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And we'll print a copy of this slide presentation and put it in your box. And I'm understanding, Joel, that's it right there?
Or just email it.
Email yours?
Yeah.
All right.
David, if, if I may, one thing that I think plays into this is if you look at Tooele's 114.9% increase, the last truth and taxation they had was 36 years ago, so if you take the 114.9 divided by 36 years, it's a 3.1% tax increase had they been doing it annually. And ours in six years is 18.8, which is also 3%. So it's, it's just to, I mean, just those two examples in my mind are just to adjust for inflation.
Councilman Anderson, and I did not plan this, I did not ask him to say that. The next page is the Consumer Price Index, and you'll see the inflation average for the last 30 years is 2.7. So Councilman Anderson's analysis of how that change and shift has occurred through the years, that 3% is spot on. That's, again, a little easier to understand in the next slide, excuse me. That's the, since 1988, I've done these in 10-year columns, the far left column is the inflation rate for the year 1989 all the way to 2018. The average inflation over that 30-year period is 2.7. Since 2012, you can see on the right, the inflation changes, it's roughly 16% since So what are those tax dollars, and where do they go? This pie chart represents a single dollar that is collected from a West Jordan resident. You can see the greatest portion of that, 55 cents, ends up at the Jordan School District. Following that, the next largest collection is a Salt Lake County collection of 19 cents. Currently, West Jordan collects 15 cents, the library 5 cents, and there are several special service districts that collect 6. So the assumption that people make that the dollar that they're paying goes directly to the city is not accurate. Those services that they get, fire, protection, police, is 15 cents out of that dollar. The tax implication, and this was a comment that I heard through our budget process, people wanted to know, how's it going to impact our average homeowner? The average home in this city is $295,500, according to the Salt Lake County Assessor's Office. We have set up on our webpage, and Ms. Wells has worked hard to get this thing online, this work table is one in which any resident can go to, take their tax assessed value, and plug it into our work table, and they'll know exactly how much money they're paying to the city of West Jordan. The significance, though, that one should recognize about that dollar figure about the home, the legislature gives a fine, a tax break to begin with. On a primary residence, we only tax 55% of the value. So the first thing when you plug that in, it will deduct that 55%, multiply it by the tax rate that is imposed by the county on the city, and you'll see a home of 295,000 will pay $1,933. That roughly works out to approximately 76 cents a day. For 76 cents, they pick up the phone, call 911, and our fire protection team is there within six to seven minutes. The reality is, if they don't get there that fast, people don't survive. If you're suffering from a stroke or a heart attack, and you wait 10 minutes to have law, or fire there, the chance of survivability decreases significantly. The bottom of that, you'll also note that we've indicated if there is an increase of any amount, we wanted the citizens to realize at 76 cents that you're paying with a 12% increase goes up to 86 cents, and basically about 2 cent increments going upward from there. For a 15% increase would be 88 cents a day. For 18%, that would be 90 cents, and for a 20% increase, it'd be 92 cents a day. So it's less than a dollar, and the contribution that that homeowner would be making to the city would be $334.67. There has been questions asked, what are the implications for other individuals in the city, those who have lower valued homes or higher? This next page talks about, on the far left, the $475,000 high-end home, and their contributions in nearly $3,308, approximately $1.23 a day is what they're paying for their property. A 20% increase would see a difference in added to that payment per day from $1.23 to $1.47. Their contribution would increase to roughly $537.97. If you're living in a home that's valued at $475,000, you probably can afford to pay that. The question I suppose have been asked of us to consider is, what if you live in a home that's 175,000? Making any kind of additional payment can be tough. I acknowledge that. Those homes make a contribution or a payment, excuse me, of $1,145 a year. They're paying 45 cents for the same services that everyone else gets. With a 20% increase, it would be a 9 cent increase from 45 to 54 cents. Now the reality is, the original budget that the staff and the department heads, you see behind me, put together every year, take into consideration that we are using those dollars that were made available to us as a result of the truth and taxation hearing in 2012. Things break down, things need improvement, things need to be replaced, population's getting bigger, the demands on the staff are greater, and what's prepared is an eight-page, what's called green sheet. The original request totaled $8,651,872. I, I share that with you and the community, just to point out, we're not going to, this is not a Christmas list that we're asking you to consider. We have trimmed that original request from 8 million to $2,886 and $396, excuse me. That amount is reflective of that meeting we had a couple months ago, a month ago, in which the council said, we're not comfortable going at that high. 30% is what this reflected, my initial ask. The council decided it needed to consider an amount between 1 and 20%. That amount are these items that are stricken. So these last 19 items reflect 20% of a tax increase, if imposed, that you could provide this community. They include additional pay for crossing guards, which I indicated in my preference was the number point priority, and why? It's legislatively ordained by law that the city's responsible for assisting those children to get across the street. So I put that as my priority. Second, I also included law enforcement with five police officers and nine firefighters. Does truth and taxation work? If you haven't read the article, the Tribune article, I would encourage you to do so. We have put it up on our webpage and it links for any citizens to read as well because it's eye-opening, it's sobering. It was Howard Stevenson who articulated it best when he said, "Some officials said after taxpayers showed up with pitchfork and hanging rope, they would rather run across the state naked than go through truth and taxation again." The reality is, it doesn't have to be painful. If you explain the process and the justification for what we're asking for, I would think every member of this community would want protection that they're getting now, to be the same type of protection next year, the same level of response. And without that, you wonder about whether or not that quality of life won't be in fact impacted in the city of West Jordan. It's at this point that I'm going to kind of, for demonstration purposes, I'm going to stand up and just point out the difference in what we're asking for. Truth and taxation, if you go to the 20%, we're talking about paying $55.78. The reality is, if you don't pay that, the law enforcement responds to a scene, and they need to deal with somebody. See, that's why I'm on the border. It's a five-second pointer, that hopefully saves somebody, they don't get shot, the law enforcement subdues that person. $55 will give you a battery that makes that taser work. Go ahead, Mayor, use it now.
Not on me, though.
The reason it's not working, it's not working because if you haven't paid for the battery, law enforcement can't do their job. The next reality is, the amount we're asking for, 20%, $334.67. You want a firefighter to come to your house, you want him wearing this equipment. Let's send him into a house that's burning without his boots and see how effective he is. $334 is what the chief needs to send Blake Edwards into a fire to save your family and your loved ones. At this point, I told you it'd be fast, I want Blake and the chief to sit down and ask questions of what it is that we're asking, because these were the two targeted items that I thought you would be most concerned about. There are other items within the 20- There are other items within the 20 items that I'd like you to ask questions about, and that's what the staff is here to answer. But this is our first chance of kind of a workshop to prepare for the evening of the 14th. Now, I realize that what I've done here is a bit dramatic, but that's intended for a reason. I think Howard Stevenson would appreciate and understand, I'm trying to be dramatic. When you ask to take 20% of someone's income, or take the value of what that 20% represents, $55, you have to have a reason to do it. You better be fair about why you're asking it, and it's been six years. That's what the legislature intended, for you folks who decided to run for office, to make tough decisions. I'll turn it back over to you folks to ask us questions.
So again, the mics are open, so feel free to just jump in with your questions for city manager or staff.
What if, what if we don't have questions for them that we'd like to have a discussion with fellow council members?
You wanna do it right now? Now's a good time.
Okay, thank you. So, so what I want to know is, when I went over the list that Mr. Bricky sent to us, there are many of these items I'm in favor of, but there are some, and sometimes I can be a little bit snarky and so on. David's copy, there's one rated 45th, but then I decided I better do it the way he asked us to do it, and, and put them one through 19. So, so that is how I submitted it, but I left my 45th there. And my 45th is, and Chief Davis, you might wanna pay attention to this one, because I'm gonna have to have a lot, a lot of justification, and not what I've heard in the past, to, to wanna support it. And so for me, I'm not, I'm not in favor of increasing traffic overtime budget. I don't, certainly, I'm not out on the road all the time. I don't see what the police see. But philosophically, I'm against officers sitting with a radar gun. That isn't how I want my tax dollars spent. I want them answering calls and driving around. And then if they see someone breaking the law, great, pull them over, but to sit, and I'll call it hiding, because that's how I feel, in a church parking lot, or somewhere along Bangator, to give someone a ticket this speeding is just not something I wanna pay for. And so, for me on this list, that's one of my, no way. The other one, I just want my fellow council members to know. My other one on here, oh my gosh, I'm gonna need glasses for both near and far soon, I'm afraid. No, I don't want them. I'm gonna hold off for a while longer. There's chairs on here somewhere. Oh, there it is. I actually ranked it 18, but it's chairs for courtroom and installation. I've got good news for you, Mr. Bricky, I know where some chairs are available. And, you know what? If I go to court, I've done something wrong, so it's okay with me if I have to sit on a bad chair, as long as I don't get hurt, because I don't wanna then be able to sue me. But, or, I have a feeling that in our Public Works building, we're gonna have some new chairs. So leave the old chairs, take the new chairs, if you really have to have them. But I can't, I can't ask someone to pay more for chairs in a courtroom. So for me, those two items are really, yeah, and they may not be that big, but for me, I'm not willing to raise people's taxes for those two items on the list.
I don't think those, those, those two items didn't make it onto the final list after we did the prioritization from the council members, is that correct?
They fell off.
So did you give us another list?
We can, I'll certainly, if you, it sounds like you didn't get the right one, and we can certainly provide that.
I've got the one that I submitted to you, but I didn't see a new one.
I have not seen one since we ranked them.
I don't think after they were ranked, that went out to anybody.
Okay, then I, we can actually, before you leave here in the next 20 minutes, we can go print that and bring it back to you. I will allow the chief to respond to your concerns about overtime. What I'll represent to you about the chairs, those chairs were the jury chairs. They're not the chairs the defendants sit in. It's the chairs the jury sits in while listening to the trial, and the AOC, which is the Administrative Office of Courts, believes their courtrooms need to look a particular way and be comfortable for jurors, and they are the ones that sort of dictate to us the values of what we have to accommodate.
And what's wrong with our current chairs?
They're, they've been there since the opening, and I gather because of where
When did it open?
They're breaking. Oh, that I don't know.
Uh, my home's been there since 1985. Some of those chairs are original.
I will have you and Judge Coons, we'll walk over together at some point, I'm sure.
Okay.
As regarding the traffics, the traffic shifts, I know we've had many discussions about this, and I know your feelings. We, we use that for, to enforce traffic laws, which in turn reduces the amount of accidents that are going on in the city, which is, again, reducing the amount of time our officers having to spend on accidents, plus makes the city a lot safer. We also use this money to use for callouts, for when we do have major accidents, we call out a team to come out investigating, because we need our specialists out there to investigate fatal accidents. So we use that money to call, to use for callout pay to get them out and do that as well. We also, last year, there's a, there's a study, or there's this program going around called D-DAX. Don't ask me what it stands for, I used to know what it stands for. But what the theory is, is if you do a high concentration of traffic stops in any given area for quite some time, you'll notice the crime will drop. We attempted or tried doing this last year down around 70th and Redwood, I don't have the exact numbers, but I can get them for you, but because we did that for a couple days or for a week, we noticed a crime dropped in that area.
Wait, what do you mean by crime? Do you mean traffic infractions, or robberies? What do, what, what do you mean by crime?
Like thefts and stuff like that, because people see the cops are out there, they don't wanna go do their thefts and do their other types of crimes there. So I do have those numbers, I don't have them with me, but my analyst does have those numbers, if you wanna see those. So, it's all kinda tied in together, so the more officers we have on the road, obviously just the uniform presence big, and so that, that helps us out, but it also gives us an opportunity to get these guys in the crossings, for the, the crossings for the schools in the morning and the afternoon. But it also helps supplement patrol, because if they're out there handling accidents, the patrol officers don't have to handle the accidents. So it's, it's, it's kinda, kinda helps us out in many different ways that way.
So, I'm not gonna see a bunch more guys out on motorcycles and radar guns, if you get this.
Oh, you're gonna, you're gonna see guys out there, because that's what they're, that's what they're supposed to do? And I'm not, I'm not denying that at all, but again, it's, it all plays in together. If we're out enforcing traffic, people see us in the spot several times during the week, they're gonna start slowing down, they're gonna start obeying the traffic laws.
In that area.
In that area, exactly. But again, the more we have out there doing it, the more we, the more that we can sell that, and the more that we're gonna, the less we're gonna have issues in those areas. You bet.
If I might speak to the traffic patrols, I am in favor of increased traffic patrols. I believe that makes our community safer, our streets safer. People less, run less red lights and run less stop signs if they are obeying the speed limit signs, and have been one who has driven in many different cities, in different states, in lots of different times, and when cities have a reputation of having good traffic patrol, people obey the laws better there, and there's those accidents that do happen, people survive them better, so I think it's a matter of surviving of people who are involved in accidents. More particularly, I see more people running red lights, because they're driving so fast they can't stop in time, the next traffic starts coming and causes more accidents. So I would love to see more and more officers keep in control of that and keeping our neighborhood safer all the way around. One of the biggest complaints I get is about the speed of people driving, particularly in subdivisions and areas like that, and I've had some personal relationships with people who've got tickets for those, and as I talked to them, I didn't feel apologetic at all that they got a ticket for driving over, you know, property in subdivision. So I think that is a good cause, and that's something that serves our citizens well.
So, Ms. Councilman Burton, are you willing to increase taxes to have that increase in traffic control?
I am not, but I am willing to pull money from some other departments in the city and put it there to make that work better that way.
Where, where would you propose we pull it from? Because when I look at most of our departments, they seem pretty lean to me.
They are, and regardless of, the, the way I see government works, when we give government some money, whichever department it is, they fill up whatever that, that is, because they have a work to do, and they'll use whatever resources we give them to accomplish that work. If we give them more resources, they can accomplish their work better, using those additional resources. So they use the maximum amount of resources that we have, and they're all, it's never enough, they always want more, because there's always more that they could be doing, that's just nature of government. So if we were to pull some back, we would lose some services in some of those other areas. As a matter of fact, I sent Mr. Bricky an email yesterday, and my email says, "For our budget meeting, would you please provide me with numbers that were to fund police and fire, just those two categories, according to your suggested green sheet approvals, which included the crossing guards?" That's not in my email, I just added that. "Then take that amount and divide it among the rest of city budgets, except for economic development and parks. Leave economic development as you prescribed in your budget, which was a small increase, and leave parks the same as the last budget." And then he provided me this answer. He said that would be $1,509,828, I'm sorry, $1,509,828 for those three positions, the equivalent of 15.5 full-time employees. He said the departments impacted would include city manager, city clerk, city attorney, city courts, finance, IT, community services, development services, building and safety, real property, GIS, development review, capital projects, facilities, events and recreation, community preservation. Removing one employee from each of these, those departments would result in the ability to make up the difference, the 1.5 million requested through the green sheet requests. He also points out that that would affect the morale of the city if we were to do that. My point with this is, if we took that, and it may be an employee, if we look at our total city budget, approximately one-third of it goes to employees, approximately one-third goes to, to building and overheads, and the other one-third probably goes to operations. It's fairly well divided that way. So all of them don't need to be employees, but some of them, it might be appropriate for that. So the other departments could do some sacrifice to help the police and fire go. Also on his police department, when he had five in this approved, that would be approving five additional police officers, which I would like to see 10, but give them the money for five, and let the police department find some ways that they could curve or reduce some of their other expenditures in order to supply more police officers, even though we give them more for five, and they could cut some other places. I believe in every budget, there's some places we can cut. As I was going through our budget book, I would come across some different areas, and, and I think the department head should make those choices where to cut it, and not us, and find a way to do their job with the less money. You know, perhaps it would be cutting on, reducing furniture that they're buying, perhaps it would could be cutting on, on mailings that they do, and do it electronically instead. Perhaps it could be on making photocopies in the photocopy machines, perhaps it could be on reducing the hours of some of their employees, or perhaps having one person, where they had two persons to a job, I don't know, but I think those would be something we could put on the departments and put that there, and still provide the police and fire with what they need.
So, I'm a li, I'm a little bit concerned with that, I guess, because my, my take on, after going through most of this, and a lot of the expense on at least the list, the green sheet list that we have from Mr. Bricky, is personnel costs. And, and as you all know, I, I very much support, I would like to see 10 new officers and the nine firemen. Our fire and police need to have equipment, but then when I look at the other departments, I say, okay, but I, I watch Ms. Wells run around crazy. She actually answered a question while she was off for the day, and it was a special day in her family, and I know that that makes my family a little bit upset when I'm doing that, and they just say, "I know, you have to do it." So I hate to see our personnel ran even leaner than what they are. Now, are there areas that I also noticed? Yes, there was, specifically a Kubota, that, that there is no way I would want to pay for that, actually, I think it's ridiculous. So are there areas that I feel could be cut in our city? Yes. Do I think that we as a council need to work with Mr. Bricky towards that end? Yes. And we need to, we need to create a culture where all of the staff understands what we as a body want, and I think we want, you know, clearly, I don't think any of us really actually feel good about what happened with all the new furnishings that are probably going into Public Works, right? So I think, you know, it's our job to set the culture, but I'm very concerned that, you know, I know that for a long time, before Mayor Rolf got in, roads were neglected. Both redoing the roads and plowing the roads were severely neglected, because prior councils didn't want to allocate the funds. And I know, for me specifically, that was hard, because my subdivision has two hills to get out of, and I permitted my children to other schools than their boundary school, so I was the transportation. When you don't have your streets plowed, it's, it's dangerous to try to get out onto 9,000 South from my neighborhood, anyway, when your streets aren't plowed. So yes, I think that our departments could probably find places to cut again like that, but I'm not sure that's the quality of city that I personally want to live in. So I agree that some cuts could be made, but I don't think to the degree that will do what we need it to do. I, I personally don't feel how we can accomplish the things that we very much need to do in our city without increasing our tax burden to our citizens, so.
You know, I, I may just ask Councilmember Burton a question, this is kind of an electrical question. If, if, if we decided now that we just no wanted, no longer wanted to use copper wiring, because it's more expensive than aluminum wiring, can we just do that everywhere we want to, because it's gonna be cheaper to do?
Actually, you could. The reason we had the problem with aluminum wire is because it was improperly installed, and they didn't use the right connections on it. Those that were done properly, it worked.
So that they use it now all the time, because it's installed properly?
They use it quite frequently, but they don't use it on small banks.
On higher voltage, sure.
But, no, on higher amperages, not voltages.
Amperages, okay.
Where it carries more current. But actually, in other countries, they use it for the small conductors all the time.
What about our country?
Our country, we don't, because we have a phobia of it, even though the problem's been solved.
Okay, so there's still issues out there, that it would save us money.
In mind, in mind.
It would save us money, but we don't do it because there's a reason. And you call it a phobia, but there's a reason. Okay? So there's our, there are reasons too, I think, why we need to do things that are gonna cost us more money, they just will. I, I, you know, you go back and look at gas in 1988 and gas today, though, it's just, there's just, inflation happens. Everything we buy, we buy a chair, we buy a tablecloth, we buy a table, anything we buy and use in the city is gonna cost us more money today than it did even in 2012. So just to recognize the fact that every year, as the slide showed, inflation goes up 2.7% on average over the last 30 years, it's just, it's gonna happen. Things are gonna cost more to do. It just, it does, and, and if we wanna, if we wanna be a city that wants to retain our employees and, and keep people, keep good people, I mean, we can go out and hire a lot of people, sure. The employment rate right now is very, very low, and there's, there's people out there probably that would like to have a job here at the city, but is that the kind of person we wanna have if we don't wanna pay for good people, and talented people, and people that are going to make a difference for our city? What do our citizens out there wanna see? Do they wanna see a city that's, that's basically can't take care of itself, can't keep the, the parks mowed every week instead of every two weeks? That we, we can't patch our potholes? You know, what is it the cities wanna see? I had a few people, not a few, two people asked me last year, "How are you gonna cut taxes?" My answer to them was, "What services do you wanna reduce, and I'll tell you what, how we can cut taxes." Because that's what the city does, the city provides services for people. You know, and, and a lot of folks out there think as long as their garbage is picked up, their water comes on, they can flush the toilet, yay, life is good. But there's a lot of other things that happen out there, and it costs money to do these things, it just does. And, and when we can't, if, if there's, if we have a shortage of crossing guards because we can't pay enough money, and they wanna go to another city to be a crossing guard, what do we do? We send a police officer out there, who gets paid a lot more than a crossing guard, to help kids get across the road. Now, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but that's what happens if we can't keep the people we need here, even down to the cross- Now that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but that's what happens if we can't keep the people we need here, even down to the crossing guards, so. I, I think there's just a, a lot of, for us to consider, and I think a lot, you see this, I think, in politics out in the, in the world, that, that politicians get to worried about getting re-elected next year, or next time, or whatever, instead of trying to do what's best for the community they're living in, they're thinking more about what's best for me. How can I, uh, benefit from what it is I'm gonna try to, so I can, when I'm running for reelection, I can say, I never voted for any taxes, I didn't want any taxes. And I wanna be able to say, I did what I thought was best for my community, and keeping my community looking good. If we ever wanna get Redwood Road fixed, so it really looks nice and sharp, when you go to from Taylorsville to South Jordan, Taylorsville looks good, South Jordan looks good, what happened to West Jordan? I'd like to see things like that looking better, so that the people coming through our city can say, hey, this really looks nice. West Jordan has really stepped it up. And I wanna be able to say to people, we made the tough decisions and we, we tried to make those things happen, so.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll just indicate, I've handed out to the council and we will make available to you in a PDF form, we'll email it to you. This reflects as you returned, uh, results, uh, two council members did not vote, so it's reflective of five of you and your rankings. You can see on the far right where the twelve percent cutoff is, fifteen, eighteen, and twenty. Excuse me.
Mayor, if, if, if I may, I've, I've got a few comments in our, in our limited time. Just for the record, I mean, most, most of you know, I do, I do finance for a living, I have a bachelor's degree in finance, master's in public administration. I am the Bill Piper, we went over this the other day, I'm the Bill Piper, Eric Okerlund.
Elena Murray.
The HR director. I'm like four people at my, my place of employment that we have here in the city.
Are you saying we could get by with three less employees at the city?
No, I'm, I'm not, uh, my budget is much smaller, my HR responsibilities are, are much smaller. Councilmember Whitelock mentioned about a culture, and when I ran for office, um, what was it, two years ago, three years ago? Uh, and I, I was not successful, um, what I had raised is the, the culture. We keep doing as a city the same thing over and over again, expecting different results, but we get the same results. We change city managers, we change electeds, um, over and over. I just wanna bring up one item that's on this list, um, which is the cemetery expansion. We, we as a council approved it despite my opposition, um, for two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars to ex- um, which, at the time we passed it, this council passed it, it was an unfunded mandate, and it's not even on the twenty percent list. That's because we don't have a vision. That's because, I gotta look at my notes. Leadership means vision, we know where we're going. Vision means planning, so planning a cemetery expansion that we're not funding? We didn't, we didn't, we didn't know, we, it came up on the item that we think this is a priority. It was voted five to, Councilmember Jacob and I, uh, were opposed, because I don't think the city should be in the cemetery business, that's, that's my job. It passed five to two, and yet it's not on this list, and it voted last on all of our surveys, those that responded to the survey, it, it came in the bottom. So, planning is hard and it requires hard decisions. I am not a fan of just saying, let's raise taxes, let's raise taxes. I've looked at our finances, um, and our budgets, and we are running lean, and I don't think we can find one and a half million dollars in all the departments to be able to play, pay for police and fire. That's not how truth and taxation is designed, it's not how the state legislature mandated taxation. What we've been doing, and I mean this collectively, not individual employees or individual departments, is coasting, making easy deci- easy decisions. We're gonna solve this problem by hiring two people and getting a truck, we're going to solve this problem by contracting with somebody. We're gonna solve this problem by hiring more people. Those are all easy decisions, the hard decisions are, what are the options? So, I don't believe the residents enjoy paying taxes, I don't. However, I don't want my city to be a rundown city, I want parks, and I think the residents want parks. I think the residents want public safety, I think they want fire, they want their kids to cross the street. We don't have enough crossing guards right now for school to start in three weeks.
School started.
All right, in some places, my, mine's not in school yet, so, but we, we don't have enough crossing guards, so we're gonna take patrol officers off the streets, protecting our citizens so they can protect the kids for a period of time, and our residents are going to be okay with that. That's, it, it's, we have to start making hard decisions, the culture has to change, we have to be visions. I'm gonna point out one on here, and I'm gonna have, uh, if I may, um, where did it go? There was a utility tax, probably not on this one.
Was it for the utility service?
Utilities, four from the bottom, okay, additional personnel, utility service tax. When I asked about this, this is tied in with water, and we're all gonna be talking about water at some point in the near future, I'm sure. If, if this helps us, one of the problems we have with water is we only, and, and I don't mean, I'm using this as an example for the budget, so bear with me, I'll only be thirty seconds. We have issues with water, and when we do balance billing, we only do it in October, because that's the manpower we have. So when we as a council, uh, Councilmember Whitelock, Mayor Writing, Councilmember Lamb, were not on the council in December, when we reduced the sewer rate. Well, I'm on equal pay, I am paying the old higher rate of sewer because my balance bill isn't until October. This one from four from the bottom may help us do better service with our residents. There's also a green sheet from our subcommittee meetings that we held earlier, for antenna, so that we can do immediate reads of water meters, so that residents can see what their usage is. And if you haven't seen water prices, if you're, if you're unhappy with water prices now, let me have you look at water prices as we're planning ten years from now, and it won't be a dollar fifty per thousand gallons. There isn't more water. All of these things tie in with vision and planning, and I'm supportive of the full twenty percent property tax increase, because it's needed, not because it's wanted, and it's because we need a firm foundation to start going forward. We've gotta bring businesses in, we've gotta provide for the residents appropriately, and I, I don't see any other option but twenty percent. I'm not supportive of the twelve, I'm not supportive of the fifteen, I'm not supportive of the eighteen, because these are needs, if we wanna have a foundation and start doing things differently so that we're not running insanity all the time, and reacting, and having a vision, and the last thing I'll say, and then, Mayor, it's back to you. The cemetery, to me, is the prime example of how we had no vision, we adopted an unfunded mandate, five to two, to, to increase the cemetery, and yet when we come to the budget choices, it's the bottom of the list, and that's because we had no plan. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll tell you why I put it on the bottom of my list, and that was because it was a one-time expense. Well, I was against it, yeah, you're right, I voted against it, but it's also a one-time expense, you don't raise property taxes, ongoing money for one-time expenses. You can use fund excess, you can use fund balances, but, I mean, half of the sheet, this, the nineteen items that we prioritized, um, yeah, that one. I mean, this sheet's divided into two columns, it's got ongoing and one-time, we don't raise taxes for one-time expenses. It doesn't make any sense to ask for fifty thousand a year from residents, every year in perpetuity, when we only have to spend that fifty thousand dollars right now. And we don't have to spend it going forward, for example, just for an example, the cemetery, let's just pull that one out, it's easy, two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. We pull that out of a fund violence or something, we don't pull it, we don't raise taxes by two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars to pay for something that we only have to buy once. We don't have to buy that a new every year. We do have to pay a policeman's salary every year, we do have to pay a fireman's salary every year, and we have to replace their equipment, and we have to do yada, yada, yada. We don't have to buy a new cemetery every year, for example. So anything in one-time funds is an automatic non-starter for me as far as tax increases go. We can prioritize what we can spend out of the fund balance, we can prioritize, um, which of those, you know, we can spend now, which is gonna bring us too low in the fund balance, where we don't feel comfortable with that level, whatever that might be. But, um, we don't spend, we don't raise property taxes for one-time expenses, I think pretty much everybody can agree on that for the most part. Generally speaking, I do have a question for the police chief, while I've got the mic, and that is, uh, when I met with one of your officers, the FOP, Brandon, thank you, I knew his first name, I couldn't remember his last name, and I, he called me Turner. He was in there. When I met with him, we talked about staffing levels and which, you know, how the frontline officers are feel, are, are feeling. I go to the chief when I need administrative things, and when I wanna know what the guy on the beat is feeling, I talk to him, because he's on the beat. But I was, I'm curious, we talked a little bit about how police officers are being recruited by other departments. Can you tell me, like, how many officers we've lost laterally to other departments in the last eight years? Just ballpark?
Yeah, let's see. I wanna say five, maybe six.
Okay, five, five to six, that's about what I would've guessed, so maybe about five percent of our force. How many have we gained in lateral transfers?
Lateral transfers, um, probably about five or six, if you count, because we got a-
So we're breaking even, maybe?
Probably maybe, maybe a little less, I don't know how many we gained, I'm trying to think, maybe four or five.
Okay, so, um, the, the, the sense that I got when I, when I sat down with Brandon was, was, we're not, it, it wasn't necessarily pay, but it was some other things, it was benefit, I know it's, our fleet's really good. I mean, what does a police officer look at when a police officer is deciding what city they wanna go to work in? I imagine they look at the fleet, and they look at, you know, am I gonna have to be like Salt Lake City and drive a fifteen-year-old police car? Or am I gonna be like West Jordan, I'm not gonna have a car that's more than two years old? I imagine they look at the fringe benefits, what the city's like, the, probably the call volume in the city as well, but, um, the types of problems they're gonna deal, deal with, maybe, maybe the types of really violent problems they're gonna deal with, how likely am I to get shot in a given city than in another city? Something like that, can you shed a little light on what maybe the city can do to keep the officers we have and to attract lateral officers? One thing, and just as a background, one thing I'm not in favor of doing, is authorizing positions that we can't fill.
Right.
I don't wanna say, yeah, sure, here's another million dollars for ten more officers, however, you're gonna be out recruiting them all day long, and we're never gonna get them. You know what I mean? So what can we do?
If I can address that point first about, uh, the recruitment and stuff, finding the people isn't necessarily the problem. Two weeks ago, we were down one person, well, sorry, three weeks ago, we were down one person. We lost one guy, and granted, they're all in different phases, we have a group of guys in different phases of training, so they're not quite on the road yet. We lost one guy off of the field training program, he, he wasn't making it, so we quit. Um, we just lost three more now to retirement, so now again, we're down five. So we're, we feel confident we can get the people, we hired twenty, doing this off the top of my head, twenty-nine people in the last year. And we had, uh, and we had some positions open before that, so we were able to, we hired twenty-nine people, so that's quite an accomplishment. Part of the problem we run into is that they haven't been through the police academy, running the choke point of going through the police academy, which right now, you have posts that, uh, a year ago, they cut their funding, so they cut the amount of seats that they had. So everybody in the valley and everybody in the state now is, is trying to get all their people through the police academy, and so that's our choke point. And we're reaching out, looking at different options to try to address that point as well. We feel confident that we can fill the seats, we can, we can get the people on the road, 'cause we're getting close, but again, we have over twenty-five percent of our police department that could retire today. And the economy's robust, and there's other things out there that are attractive to them, and so they hit their twenty years and are looking to go elsewhere because there's a lot of other jobs available, so it's hard to gauge on when those people might go, I mean, we have a general idea of what we're looking at, but people always come up and say, I'm retiring, so, yeah, it's a constant turnaround. But we feel that we can stay on top of it, 'cause like I said, we were down one three weeks ago. So as, as for the retention part of things, I mean, that's, that's always a battle, you know? We, uh, you, you look at all these other agencies, they're offering all these other types of incentives, um, retirement incentives for the tier-two employees. That, that one scares us, because those are our zero-to-seven-year guys, and those are typically the ones that aren't really vested in the system here. It's easier for them to get up and go, because they're not accruing the, they don't have the seniority, they don't have the vacation time, and so on and so forth. So that's what a lot of agencies are targeting, so we gotta look at ways to try to retain them now. Obviously, if we, we follow suit with everybody else, throw money at it and try to retain them through offering a little bit more incentive for retirement, I mean, that, that works, but again, I don't see, I don't see a lot of, a lot of guys going to these other departments that are offering a lot. Again, they're still trying to figure, find their way through this whole ordeal as well. Now, I've talked with the city manager, and he's assured me that we are gonna be addressing some of these issues at a later date, and so I feel confident that we will find some type of resolution to try to retain and keep those folks here.
Do we have any idea what it would take, I mean, obviously, we're talking money today, it's budget season, what it would take in, in just your operating budget, salary budget, not, not talking new positions necessarily. I'm talking, make us more competitive, more attractive, whatever it's gonna take financially speaking, for us to, to bump the police department budget, not necessarily in the salaries for new positions, but in general, what it would take to, to kinda lift that, I mean, would, would another, you know, a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, a million dollars, what would it take to bump that up?
Trying to, we, we actually did look at this, we had a, uh, we looked at like the retirement, 'cause that's what a lot of agencies are offering as retirement benefits. Um, if we were to, to bump our tier-two employees up and give them an, an additional ten percent in their retirement, and then also look at the older guys, 'cause if we can keep some of these older guys that are retiring here just a little bit longer, that's gonna benefit us a ton as well, so putting a five percent increase in their retirement as well, that's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars with what we have now.
Okay, that's, that's one number that was gaping in my, what I want to look at taxes for.
And this, I mean, this, this is something, obviously, we, we, we need it all, obviously, but, uh, again, that's where we're at.
Right. Okay, that's, that's all I have for now, but I have lots more for later.
My turn? All right, I'll take more than thirty seconds. Um, first of all, I wanna thank the city staff for all they've done over the past few months. We, it's not like we've been given this today and didn't know this was here, um, so thanks for all your hard work and getting all the information out in front of us. Um, I'm in the same boat as Zach, um, it's hard for me to go out and ask the citizens to do tax increase for one-time costs, so as I look at the green sheets, look at the recommendations, police, fire, police, the first three, I can go and ask the citizens to do tax increase on that, but then you get down to some of the others, unforeseen minor projects, how can I ask the citizens to pony up a hundred fifty thousand for that? And that's, that's gonna be ongoing as well, or the cemetery expansion, et cetera, so I've kinda gone through my list here, and I've, I've said, okay, if I was a citizen, well, I am a citizen, I'm a citizen of West Jordan, all of us up here are, so our taxes are gonna be increased too, as we're making these decisions. You know, what would I, what would I take off of here, and then go back to the citizens with, with, with the truth and taxation? And, you know, I listed a few things here, and there's a tune of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that I would just take off fully and find another way to fund them or, or not wait. My, my biggest problem I have, and, and you guys, you guys have all been through this before, thi- this might be my first time, but you guys have been through this before, we always seem as a city to put it off, well, let's wait till next year, we don't have the budget this year. And it's like that every year, even in two thousand and twelve, when they had the, the raise in taxes, I'm sure it wasn't enough to cover for everything. And then with the economy, everyone on that side of the, uh, of the tables, you lost people, you lost employees because there wasn't money to pay for them. So what I'd like to do as a council, and I apologize, I had to leave at three o'clock today, and you guys can talk till ten o'clock tonight if you want to. I'd like to go through this list right now and say, which ones would you take off, and then let's discuss that, 'cause I, I think we could talk to a blue in the face about who needs money and who doesn't, everyone needs money. Uh, but before we do that, real quick, I did wanna ask, uh, Chief Peterson one quick question. Fire, I'm all for it, you know, I have been, and I, I wanna do that, can you, maybe just as public record, talk about the difference between now and ten years ago, is your staff the same size today as it was ten years ago? Or have we added more? You don't have to have an exact number for me, but, you know, have we gone from two hundred people to two hundred and fifty in the, in the past ten years? Wha- what is, what is your staff size now compared to ten years ago?
Yeah, the comparison that I did on, uh, the packet that we handed out, populate, I did it from the year two thousand, when I started here, to two thousand, fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. In two thousand, uh, population was eighty-three thousand, today we're roughly one fourteen thousand, increased a thirty-seven percent. In two thousand, uh, population was eighty-three thousand, today we're roughly one fourteen thousand, increased a thirty-seven percent. Total call volumes went up seventy-five percent from thirty-eight hundred calls to sixty-seven last year. Uh, with that, obviously, our revenue goes up with the increase in calls. Number of stations, we had three at the time, now we have four, but the, it wasn't in proportion to what was needed. We hired, uh, twelve firefighters, what we needed to hire was sixteen. Uh, so, on another sheet that I had, the comparisons, uh, NFPA Fire Department Survey, posted what the median rates of career firefighters per thousand citizens. It's, we should be, with our population, at point nine firefighters per thousand people. Today, we're at one, we're at point seven zero. Compare that to the year two thousand, we actually had more in proportion. We had point eight firefighters in two thousand, but everything has went up, our calls have went up, but our personnel has not went up with, with the population growth. So actually, we're lower than we were in two thousand.
And the reason why I wanted you to say that, I was, I want that on public record to know that as we're making these decisions, as citizens and as elected officials, that we're not just making it because Chief Peterson said, let's add people. We need those people and we're going to need those people in ten years from now. So if we just say, let's wait till next year, it's gonna be wait, 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 and we waited, uh, what was it, two thousand twelve? So six years since the last one. I personally, as a citizen, don't want a tax increase, but I've looked through the numbers and I've, I've watched last year's budget meeting and the previous one as well. And for some of these things, I'm willing as a citizen now to have that tax increase as, as personal citizen of, of West Jordan City. But there's some things on here that, like I said, I'd like us to go through as a council and say, well, I wouldn't want this or this or this, let's, you know, instead of doing the twenty percent increase, let's do this, so if we can have a opportunity to talk about that, if I can go first, is, is that okay if you guys do that right now, or? Okay.
Well, so, before you jump in, just, I can, one quick question for either Dave or Dave. Um, the one, the one-time costs, for example, that are, um, fire and patrol, cuz there were some comments about uh, not funding one-time costs out of tax increases, but let's just take police and fire. Um, one-time cost for increasing fire personnel is fifty-two-five. Are we able to hire firefighters and not have a one-time cost, or is that training and outfitting?
Training and outfitting, they've gotta have that gear that you saw Blake wearing earlier, they've also, we, we're trying right now to acquire, uh, laterals that were discussed previously for, uh, police. We're trying to establish ourselves as a city where firefighters would like to land. So, um, that's an average cost to start a new firefighter trained and outfitted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Lamb, I'm, that was my only question.
No, thank you, I, I just, uh, I'm looking at this as my wish list too and saying, if I were a citizen, what, what I wanna pay for? Um, the first two I'm gonna ask, and this is just, this is not to offend the prosecutors and the attorney's office, but do we need those two and why? And I don't know if that's a David question or?
I can take a stab at it, because, um, I was the initial, two years ago, we looked at the number of prosecutors the city of West Jordan had versus other cities with similar caseload. Um, currently, the city has three prosecutors, there's two full-time and two part-time, so that's how we come to that number of three. For a caseload of a similar size in West Valley, I, I wanna say Sandy and other cities, I can't, I can't recall, Provo. Um, the number of average prosecutors in those offices were six. So I recognized when I made the request last year for another prosecutor was still below that which would accommodate a caseload of about four to five hundred open cases. Our guys are carrying anywhere from six to seven hundred. So I, I realistically shared with Mr. Wall, our, our new city attorney, you're not gonna be able to get three prosecutors. You may be able to justify one.
So I guess in, in my sense, and I, and once again, I'll say, as a citizen, I would say, I don't wanna raise my taxes for two prosecutors, similar to your, you know, I don't want more people, you know, on the street writing tickets. Uh, so those were two that I would probably take out as far as the tax increase goes. I would also take out the Public Works unforeseen minor projects, even though I know there are things that need, need to be done. Um, and then the three at the bottom, I wouldn't justify that for a tax increase, the vehicle allowance, the chairs for the courtroom, or the cemetery expansion. I, I, I think we, those are three things that they need to do within their budgets, and then as far as cemetery goes, find another way to pay for that cemetery expansion, so those are my, the four at the bottom are Public Works, one fifty, the development, the court, the finance at the bottom, and then I'm, not decided today, but I, as a citizen, I would say, I don't want more parts, prosecutors for a tax increase. So, that's where I'm at, I just wanted to throw that out there and see how all of you feel, because if we do all of this, David, Ricky, this, twenty percent of all of this, correct, that's on this page?
Last four. Okay.
Last four do not get included in the twenty percent.
But if you go by these numbers, there's a lot of one-times in these totals, for example, the police, five new officers at five sixty-seven. Four fifty-two of that is ongoing, one fifteen is one-time. Well, yes, but you don't outfit them with ongoing tax dollars, you outfit them with one-time tax dollars.
Or like the Brian system, we need the Brian system, but you're right, Zach, that's, and we don't need a Brian system every year.
Right, right. If you raise, if you raise taxes this year to pay for one-time things, you're not gonna lower them again next year because you bought those one-time things. That would be cool. I would love to see us drop property tax, that'd be fun, but.
And you're gonna hear me, uh, next year say, I would like to be more in line with somebody like West Valley, who every year gives a notice of truth in taxation, and rather than have every four, five, seven years, a jump of six or twenty percent, they're looking at anywhere from one percent to two-point-seven percent.
Right. I like that idea.
So I saw Councilman Anderson's light on and then it went off, so I thought he was going to say this, but, um, he didn't. So I will, um, Chad, one of, one of the things on the prosecutors is one of the things that I believe we understood from our judge, is one of the things they do is help train our police officers, so that our police officers are getting the right evidence at the scene, so that the cases can be successfully charged.
So the police officers have a requirement every year of forty hours of training. Unlike the attorneys who only need, and there's a comment, since I am an attorney, it's only thirteen and a half hours. We expect our police-
Maybe we should reverse it.
Need is in quotation marks.
Back to the bar.
Only need.
Those police officers, uh, getting that training in this instance, I know Joel Leneris has taught next door, Ed Berkovich, uh, has taught. Um, I have gone over on occasion and talked about search and seizure issues. So we're trying to save money by not sending police officers out of, uh, the city to get that training. Um, I can share with you, in the case of the judge, his workload is currently that of one-point-eight judges. He is quickly approaching the workload of two judges. Um, that's something he and I continue to discuss. But one of the reasons we need that additional prosecutor is cuz the judge is keeping that courtroom busy literally four days a week. The fifth day, generally trial days are on Friday. And you, you make a decision, if you're a prosecutor, and there are only three of you, as to which cases you will prosecute and which ones you will plea bargain. And the minute you have a tough case and there's an unavailable witness, or there has been a, a lack of collected e- evidence, you compromise the case and you plea it. Um, we had a case just recently, Mr. Berkovich put in over a hundred hours to prepare for a trial. To do that, um, for those hours in preparation for a class B trial, a class B misdemeanor, excuse me, he had to go and look at files that were some, in, in some instances, over four years old. Having read all that information, when the trial occurred, he actually was able to use one of the documents, uh, that was written by a police officer, well-documented incident from four years ago to the satisfaction of the judge, to justify conviction. So i- i- if you have the prosecutors, you have the preparation, and the law enforcement officers know what they're doing, four years later, it can be a really effective tool and get somebody convicted. And in the instance of this issue, was a domestic violence, that person, and for the first time, having had three prior visits to court dismissed, because they just made a calculated value ch- decision. Three prior visits to court on domestic violence were dismissed, Ed said enough's enough. So another prosecutor just helps secure the safety of our community.
And that being said, if you hire law, more law enforcement officers to be out on the streets, you're increasing caseload to already an over-case staff. Uh, I was hired here as a civil attorney, not to do any prosecution or criminal work, in the first seven months I was here, I was taking a full-time prosecution load, basically, and working it into fifty percent of my time, because we were just, we didn't have prosecutors. And so even though that wasn't a part of my job duties, nor was it the reason I was brought on board, from March to December of last year, I carried a prosecution load, just because we didn't have any more prosecu-, we didn't have any prosecutors.
Although, the one thing I don't want to hear is, let's hire five new police officers, and because of that, we had to hire another prosecutor, that's, that's something citizens aren't gonna wanna hear, right?
No, I don't, I don't think that's the case, I think you're, I think you were at the point you needed additional prosecutors if you don't do anything with police. And now I'm saying, you're at a point, I can take you out to Tulac County where the population's sixty-five thousand and they have six prosecutors. You have a hundred and fourteen thousand and you have three. So you're completely understaffed in this area already, if you don't add more patrol. If you add more patrol, you're just compounding what's already an ongoing problem.
So now I wanna answer Zach's question, but I'm going to go off of that, that the bottom four are, oh, not Zach's, Chad's, sorry, thank you. The bottom four are gone. So aside from the bottom four, then the ones I would take off would, I agree, the unforeseen minor, minor projects. We all know, increased traffic overtime. And then, um, for the same reasons that Zach has said, the, the bike, their bike replacements, some of the one-time funds, I guess I'm okay with, because I know there are so many other needs in the city.
The bike replacement's actually ongoing.
Is it ongoing? Okay, then leave the bikes in.
It's to have a rotation kind of, the leases on the police officers.
Yeah, I remember now, thank you, yeah, so, so for me, some of the other one-time things, because yes, um, while we're outfitting the new officers now, we still have to keep outfitting them and their equipment wears out and, and we have other needs, so those would be mine.
So I, I guess, I guess I'll, I'll jump in. I, I still look at the vision of, of things that we're, that we're all hearing, and the, the year and a half that I've, um, been on the council, listening to the police department, listening to the fire department, listening to Judge Coons and his report. Um, many of these items are interrelated, like we just talked about, the prosecutors. I don't, I don't know, uh, the prosecutor, uh, Ed Berkovich. His hundred hours was just what he invested, it wasn't overtime hours, it was a hundred hours that he invested in the case.
That's correct, he was putting in those hours during preparation for other caseload, but maybe, he made the determination that after three prior trips to court and dismissals, that he wasn't gonna let this one slide.
No, and that, and, and I appreciate that, and I, I do think we need to get to this point, we've been a very thrifty ci- city uh, over the years, I've interfaced with the city, which goes back to the early nineteen nineties, when I wasn't a resident, I was a, a neighbor uh, to West Jordan City. Um, but since we're talking about things to take off, I mean, I just, uh, the only four that I wanna take off is those that are below the twenty percent increase. Um, even though I think the utility service tech is related to solving some of our water issues. Um, I don't, I don't know, I, to, to me, I like plans, I like systems in place. It, I like vision, uh, leadership, leadership is going places where we haven't been before. And we've been here for twenty years cyclically.
Is that cyclically or cyc- cyclically?
Oh, cyclically, okay, I wanted to make sure I had that right. Um, I, I don't want to raise the increases, or I don't wanna raise the taxes. However, I think the residents would be supportive, especially when they can see that the Brian system helps with snow removal, so they can get their kids to school, get to the store, get to work, helps our business community. Um, we have two items for parks and rec for backflows, and that's to be in compliance, and I, and I don't know how we can live with ourselves not being in compliant with things like bonds and backflow preventers and things that we're required to do. And, and I ju- I just see a need for all of these items. And if we don't do twenty percent, I foresee future increases closer together. Thank you.
With that thought, the, both those park backflow preventers, for example, are one-time expenses? Would you be okay using general fund reserves to pay for the, I'm not saying necessarily that we need to not pay for any of these one-time things, I'm just saying I don't wanna raise taxes, perpetual money to pay for one-time things.
So let me ask you a question.
Okay.
The last two budget cycles, we've balanced the budget on savings and selling real estate. I don't think we have reserves to pay for these one-time funds, and that's coming from my background as finance. We just balanced the budget two years, selling real estate and pulling money out of savings to get to a balanced budget. My argument is, I don't think we have money in departments, and I don't think we have adequate reserves if we wanna maintain a cushion for something that comes up to make some of those requests.
That's a good question now, so the, the, uh, here we go, general fund reserves are, um, we're, we're budgeted for twelve million in reserves this year. That's what's on the tentative budget that's already been passed. That's, uh, twelve million, one eighty-six, oh, forty-three.
And I would be remiss if I didn't remind the council, you do have six and a half million tucked away.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go there. You thought, uh, truth in taxation hearings were politically suicidal, um?
I just think it's one of those items that was-
You need to know, I mean, we have-
That was, that was part of those sales, uh, three properties that were sold in the last year, generated six and a half million dollars.
Right.
Which, which this council approved for a certain purpose.
Right, and so that's already allocated, I don't wanna-
Right.
I don't wanna allocate that.
And David, not that David, this David. Um, what is our reserve as a percentage, cuz we have to be between, I think, five and twenty-five, is that right?
Right.
Or maybe, maybe Eric knows, and I thought we were like in the high teens, maybe mid-teens?
One eighty-six.
And I'm not sure where, there was some, uh, rumor, and perhaps I saw it on Facebook, that when it was over twenty-five percent, there was an automatic deduction, but it would never even approach twenty percent, so. Um, and there is no automatic deduction or return, um, we'd have to go back and do some type of resolution.
We have to spend it.
Yeah, so.
Okay, as far as what you've, what you've put in the budget, so at the end of this fiscal year, it's projected to be about thirteen and a half percent, and that's the unrestricted fund balance.
Okay, so thirteen and a half percent, that, that ties into my argument, and I, I don't disagree with what you're saying about paying-
It's not the numbers that are on the budget, though. It's just not these numbers, uh, these numbers show twenty percent.
Is that, is that which budget here, is that, I think he was just saying it was as a blast-
City manager proposed eighteen nineteen, it's what we've approved.
He's talking, he's talking the percent.
Yeah, twelve million divided by fifty-nine million gives you twenty percent.
Uh, we, we just need to clarify, the thirteen and a half percent is the unrestricted fund balance. That twelve million dollars that you're referring to is unrestricted and restricted for C roads.
And you can't use the re-
For the general fund?
In the general fund.
Okay.
You can't, you can't use the restricted, obviously, so we're talking thirteen percent that we have to play with, which is how many million? Did, what'd you say is, if it was twelve million, you said?
It's about seven million.
So we have seven million in reserves, and we're talking about taking, uh,
Well, that's a policy discussion we need to have too.
Well, right, but, and I'm not disagreeing that one-time funds, I'm just saying I don't think we have one-time funds that we can use. That's, that's my argument, that's why, that's why what I'm, what I'm saying is, it's, it's leadership, it's vision, it's planning. I believe we do not have a choice but to increase twenty percent.
Well, and all I'm saying is, I don't wanna increase three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars worth of one-time expenses that we're gonna collect next year, and the year after, and the year after that, and the year after that.
And you're gonna have green sheets come next year.
Right.
One's an antenna to help with water.
Let's deal with those next year, let's raise, no, that's. And I guess that probably came out-
It's a ten-year plan, it's a, it's a ten-year plan, we don't deal with it next year, we deal with it this year, what are we doing in twenty twenty-two? What are we doing in twenty twenty-five?
Well, we're not buying the same backflow preventers.
No, we're not buying, but there'll be other backflow preventers, correct?
Show me those projected green sheets and let's, we'll talk about those, I'm ready to talk about those today too.
I-
I, I'm all for long-term planning.
Oh, I'm, I'm with you.
But, you know.
But doing less than twenty is, is react, is reacting, it's not long-term planning, that's my opinion.
This is all reactive.
Thank you.
And just to keep the conversation, I've never- And just to keep the conversation, I've never, we've heard from three members, um, is there any willingness from the remaining two?
Well, I'll, I'll speak up too, let me just, uh, I could drop the unforeseen minor projects, but let me just give you a background on that. As the facilities manager for the city, I watched year after year after year of remodelings taking place in the buildings in the city. And, uh, I was just instructed to go do it. And, uh, I'm, so what budget do you want that to come from, you know? If it goes over, do a budget adjustment at the end of the year, oh, whatever. And so the intent, and so I started putting this hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a couple of years ago, to, to try to take care of things like lighting that goes around the outside that the previous city manager wanted to have on this building. Uh, the attorney's offices needed to be remodeled a year or two ago. Building safety had a whole bunch of remodeling done in their offices. Some cabinets out here that the city manager want, there's just things that happened here. And these are all unforeseen minor projects that happen, and that's why I put those in. I'm fine with taking them out if city manager says, well, we're not gonna do anything when this building is, is got some people move out of it, you're not gonna remodel anything to get somebody else to move into that space either. So, that's, that's what that money is, was there for, was these unforeseen things that happen in the city. They just, the, the facilities group, this is primarily for the facilities group, if you look. The brine system, uh, we moved that building out of Public Works, the, the little metal building out there, we moved it over where it is by the salt storage, just specifically for the brine storage area. So it's there, it's ready, it's got some conduiting in it and everything to put a new system in there. But we haven't had a brine stor- a brine system in this city ever. So yeah, we could probably get along with it for another year if we wanted to do that. There's, there's things like that out there, I guess. That, you know, approved CBAs for the fire department. Okay, we can probably get along with what they've got for now, for another year. There's a lot of things in there, but they, they're, these are things though that are on this list and they're on there for a reason. And the reason is that they're needed, it's not a want, and it's a need. And, and again, paring it down from eight million dollars and, and we cut it down to this two million, four forty-three, I think it's, it's, that's very responsible, uh, cutting, if you will, to get it down to what the needs are. Our city manager took it down to nineteen items. City council had an opportunity to prioritize those nineteen items, and in that priority, this is where they ended up. And if we go to a twenty percent increase, you just draw a line across there. Next year, there's an opportunity again to do this very same process. And, and, and as looking forward, I, I think we might do it a little differently next time. We might have more budget meetings so that, so that council members are not looking at simple. Yeah, we're gonna have to because some of the complaints were, I only got to know about these three departments, I didn't get to know about all of them. So we're gonna try to make some things happen so we become better educated council members next year. But regardless, I, I, I can say, and I would agree with council member Anderson, I would go with the twenty percent, um, where it is right now. Because every one of these items that are on there are items that, again, are not, uh, wishlist items. They're, they're needed items, things that are, are very needed in the city, so.
Mayor, if I could just.
Just one second. I think something that the mayor said is, is something that I, again, I'm gonna go back to culture. Just because someone's vacating a room doesn't mean it needs to be redecorated for the next person. So that, and that includes city managers that wanna put ridiculous lighting on buildings. The answer needs to be no, and we're the budget committee, so. If, I am not in favor of that hundred and fifty thousand because of those kinds of things because I think it's the culture thing that needs to change. Now, as far as the other issues that, that Councilman Jacobs has is, um, I agree with Councilman Anderson, we need it, we need an increase, and there are items that Mr. Burkie needs to be able to be able to fund. That that money will be needed for, it's needed today, actually, but we're, we're prioritizing. So I appreciate this, this opportunity that we've had, but I think that hundred and fifty thousand is a cultural thing that we just need to change the culture.
And if I could just weigh in with my two cents on the cultural difference.
What budget is that two cents coming out of?
Mine, I'll take it out of my own wallet. Having served as an elected official for ten days in one county.
Ten years.
For ten years, excuse me, it seemed like ten days, it went so fast, it was so much fun. During those ten years in Summit County, which was at one of the largest, um, we, we never had a truth in taxation in the entire eighteen years I worked in Summit County. Ten years I served as the county attorney, never had a truth in taxation. When Judge Atkins left to take the bench and I moved into his office, there were several council members who said, you need to change this office, you need to get current. Why? He took that office over in nineteen seventy-four. It had yellow furniture with metal tubing that was right out of a Watergate hearing. It was great looking. It was, it was great looking. That's the philosophy I have taught, brought to this job. We are not gonna be looking to remodel every room, we're gonna be frugal and utilize this building to the best of our ability with what we have right now. I don't anticipate coming back to you and asking for more money for furniture, we have what we need right now. I've heard that, I, I, I don't wanna explain to a taxpayer, I need to take fifty-five dollars from you so I can have a new credenza, doesn't work, bad idea. What I need fifty-five dollars for is for taser batteries. I need it so our firefighters have boots and enter a home that's on fire and recovering and saving people. Now, I, 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 I think I'm hearing from Councilman Jacob a fair request. We'll go through the budget and look at those one item, uh, purchase items and we'll remove them, and I'll give that to you in a form of a different format, so you can look at that and what does that look like. We can try to figure out where to come up with that money, that's our responsibility, finding options is, I think, what I think is our obligation, we can try to do that. Prior to the fourteenth, I'm not gonna hand it to you on the night of the fourteenth, I don't think that's fair. So we'll look to try to get that information to you within the next week. Everything that we're doing, we're, this new technology and age of internet and streaming, the mayor and I have already talked, I think there is a way to involve the community and all of those elected officials next year in a budget process that will allow you, if you're not in a small group, to watch it later. And the citizens can hear firsthand what it is that the police, fire, parks, public works, the attorney's office, planning needs. So we'll continue to get that ready and prepared for next year. Because the reality is, budget process, I think in my opinion, doesn't start in June. It starts literally January one.
I'm just gonna ask one question. I like the budget you're starting in January, but it would be good if we could start next year's budget in October, coming up. Start laying out a plan, but on the hundred and fifty thousand from the miscellaneous, maybe that's not the right thing. Back in October, before the three of you were on the council, we had an issue come up with the HVAC in the animal shelter. And we replaced that kind of as an urgent thing, did that come out of that f- fund, mayor?
We didn't have that last year, that fund.
And how much was the HVAC to replace, just for the animal shelter, was it fifty?
That was another one of those things that we had to go back and get a, a budget amendment for to be able to cover that, because it was, it was about a hundred thousand dollars to do that.
Okay, so, so, you know, we, we, we talk about, we have a reserve at the school, it's not a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we have a reserve because things go out. My, my AC went out on a, on a unit that's not warranty anymore, and that'll cost me a couple thousand dollars to, to fix an HVAC, but it's not in my budget, but I might pull it out of that contingency. So, again, it, it's, it's knowing what we're doing and envisioning and planning, so that's all I'm gonna say.
And that's, and that's a discussion we need to decide, and I've, I've heard this question asked in discussions just like this. Not only the three years I've been on the council, but the three or four years I was paying attention before that, where we have, when we were on the budget committee, we talked about, at, at that point, it was, uh, what, seventeen percent, I think, was the maximum you could have? What was it before, it was twenty-five, the general fund balance, remember? They raised it a few years ago to twenty-five. Before that, it was like seventeen, I wanna say it was seventeen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, oh, man, I was so close. So it was eighteen percent was the most you could have in a fund balance, and it was, the question was, well, what's the right number? If you're constantly at eighteen or exceeding it and having to do budget amendments to spend that money, you're collecting too much money from the residents, your taxes are too high. If you're constantly at five and you're having to, oh, gosh, what are we gonna cut so we can maintain that five, your taxes are probably too low. So somewhere in the middle is the right answer, between five and twenty-five. Twenty-five, I think, is probably too much, five is probably too low. Or, I wanna say thirteen on unrestricted, that sounds about right, that's, that's not, not off by a lot. But if we're going to increase, uh, uh, property taxes in order to increase a budget, an ongoing budget department category by four hundred thousand, that this year will be spent on these backflow things, that's a discussion I'm willing to have. If we say, look, the parks budget needs to go up by four hundred thousand dollars because every year, there's four hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff that needs to be fixed, this year, it's these two things.
Well, right.
Next year, it might be something else. I'm willing to look at parks, that's one thing that I had separately, I, I think the Parks Department's been sorely underfunded for years. I was very much in supportive of the two-dollar parks fee that lasted for a week and a half. Brian remembers that, as one council left and another council moved in. I'm very much in favor of increasing the parks budget, and if that goes for these two things this year, that's great. And, and if it goes for, for maintaining park strips next year, even better. You know what I mean, and, and the ongoing.
Right, and that, and that, and that theory works if all things stay the same. So we have the same number of calls for the fire, we have the same number of calls for police, we don't grow the parks, then, then the budgets work. It's when, it's when things change, and we had Judge Coons come and talk to us and said, the minor infractions are decreasing, not catastrophically, but they're, uh, at a pretty good clip, and the more serious things are increasing, the, the shootings, the robberies, uh, we have the porch pirate. I mean, we have all these bigger crimes that are occurring.
Was that that one lady?
Multiple times, yeah. Um, but, but, but we're, we're seeing more, and so now we have more court cases and we're having prosecutors determining, do I do this one as a plea bargain, or do I prosecu- prosecute this one?
Which is probably why the major ones are going up and the minor ones are going down.
Right, and, and, and then you have, you have the Rio Grande that, that Salt Lake and the state of Utah has done, which has shifted, um, people. And, and now it's, it's adjusting, but it's also the Jordan River Parkway, and so, and so things adjust. Times, times change, we have more roads, it's, it was eight hundred and eleven miles, Brian or Dave, somebody, Public Works, Brian. Eight, eight hundred and eleven road lane miles and now we're probably eight fifty.
We are currently at.
Yeah, we all need, we all need glasses.
Where's the urge, Brian?
Eight hundred and eighty-three.
Okay, so just in the year and a half I've been on the council, our roads have gone from eight eleven to eight eighty-three.
From seven hundred to eight eighty-three.
Eight, I've got on it, eight, oh, from eight eleven. So, there's, there's needs for brine, there's needs for snow plows, and you gotta have drivers for snow plows. We have eleven trucks, the last time I rode with the plows, Brian didn't need any plows last year. But we have eleven plows, so.
Extra plows.
That's, you know, that's a lot of people that are putting in twelve-hour race to plow the roads as a service to our residents. And, and so all, to me, all of these things are interrelated and every budget is different. And so the plans are, when do we need the next fire station? When is the next time we need five new police officers? When's the next time, as the district builds more schools, that we get crossing guards? And we put them in a timeline that's in twenty twenty, we need to have seventy-two crossing guards and a hundred and twenty-seven police officers, and we build the fifth fire station in twenty twenty-four because the need's there to maintain our six percent. That's visioning, that's leadership, that's planning, and that's where I wanna go.
And I don't disagree with any of that. I think we're talking semantics a little bit.
A little bit.
I think we're, I think we're mostly on the same page, it's just that I'm, I'm not seeing. Okay, since we got the sheet, I'm in favor of the crossing guards, I'm in favor of some new police officers. I haven't decided on a number yet, but it's not ten and it's probably not five. Fire, I'm still on the fence about, we can talk about that. Um, I'm in favor of the overtime police, uh, traffic budget, I'm in favor of the overtime police, uh, special assignment budget. Those are on here two different times. I'm in favor of giving the police department, I just wrote down a number of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just as a general budget increase for incentives, for recruitment, for whatever it's gonna be to keep positions filled. And I'm in favor of, I wrote down just a round number, three hundred thousand for parks. Because I know parks needs about another two million dollars a year, and I figure if we increase it about three hundred thousand a year, we'll get there in about five, six, eight years, so. That's, that's kinda what I wrote down as, as the general things that I'm in favor of increasing budgets for. I don't wanna get into specifics, if we're, if we're talking about raising taxes for things that I think are one-time things, and what we're talking about is raising a budget, not raising taxes to pay for this backflow valve. We're raising taxes to give the Parks Department more money for whatever they need it for. And I think the Parks Department needs a whole lot more money, right, Dave? Dave's, right, Dave's?
Staffing would be.
Staffing, for example?
Definitely needed.
I know last year we had a hard time filling the part-time seasonal parks. Because, I mean, I don't know what the reason was, but if we'd have paid a lot more, we probably could have filled those a lot easier. Just as an example, so, yeah, I know the Parks Department needs a lot of money. And, and what Jim, Mayor, you were saying at the very beginning about, why isn't Redwood Road look good, why doesn't city streets look good and things like that? Part of that reason is the parks budget, and I think the parks budget needs to, needs to have some serious attention. That's why I wanted to throw some money that way. So those are the things that I'm definitely in favor of, some of the other ones, I'm a little wishy-washy on, some of them I'm absolutely against, like cemetery, again, we don't need to raise taxes to pay for quarter million dollars in cemetery every year.
Do you like any of the bottom four?
No.
Okay.
Nope. By the way, that would look like about a ten to twelve percent, I think, from what I'm definitely in favor of. So I'm, I'm not saying I'm against all tax increases, I'm saying I'm, I'm against the tax increase that I can't justify when I'm going knocking on doors next year to keep this job. If I can't justify it, I, I, I can't talk about it when I'm knocking on somebody's door, so. It's not to say they're not good things, I just, just as a general statement, there's an org chart to the city, right, and every time we look at it, we see city councils at the top, you see mayor and city council sometimes combined into one, then you see city manager, then you see department heads and see little, you know, admin assistants grafted in and, and different things. But what you don't see, what's never on that chart, is the very, very top. And it's not my job to represent your needs to the hundred and sixteen thousand people out there, it's my job to represent their needs to you. Okay, it's not, I'm, I, I, I appreciate what you're asking for and what you all want, but I've got several thousand people that, that, uh, pay all of our salaries, right? And it's them who I have to justify it to, and I have to justify their wants to you, not the other way around. So when I hear my constituents telling me, hey, crime is a real problem, speeding is a problem on my street, I've never heard anybody say, sorry, Chief Peterson, I've never heard anybody say, my neighbor's house burned down because the fire department couldn't get there fast enough. That's never come up. It's hard for me to go knocking on the door and say, we need to raise your taxes by almost a million dollars a year for nine new firefighters, when the house that catches on fire still gets put out. I, I'm not saying let the houses burn down so we can increase your budget. Don't, don't get that wrong. I'm just saying when I go, what I'm hearing back is, yes, we need police, yes, we need parks, we need aesthetics, and we need economic development. That's what I'm hearing. And so consequently, that's where I feel comfortable putting money on a tax increase.
One of the things that, uh, was discussed recently was the garbage pickup and removal and, and, uh, we've talked about maybe ways in which we can say that. I'm gonna ask, uh, Kim, cause she had a survey out, uh, and how the public responded to that survey, and what did the public say about the things that, that, that you can respond to and tell us about? How they wanted to see, what did they wanna see cut, and what did they wanna see kept?
That's an interesting question, I put that out last week and in five days I had over a thousand responses. Um, the public is very interested in recycling and garbage and green waste pickup. There's a lot of confusion with what's happening in the recycling industry right now, and a lot of people were okay. recycling industry right now. And a lot of people were okay with keeping their, um, fees and seeing those rise because they didn't want to see their services cut. I actually had Jeremy Olson dig deeper into those results. And so I am expecting a report back from that. And I think he's having that back to me today. We've been a little bit tied up with this today, so I haven't had a chance to look at that yet. But, um, on the surface, they want to keep their services, um, as is, it looks like. Um, they were okay with getting rid of their Christmas tree pickup, the curb side, which wasn't too surprising. Um, but they were very passionate about it. And there's a lot of misinformation that's circulating on with what's recyclable, what's not. And so there's a big need for that discussion to take place. And with what's happening in China right now, that's no surprise. I just got another article that is saying what a crisis the recycling industry is in right now. So there is a big need for some public education to take place on that. And that needs to take place soon, I think. Um, but there's a lot of misinformation that's circulating. But it looked like a lot of people were willing to see their fees increase slightly, um, as long as their services weren't cut. So, so we'll see. The initial, uh, results that came back were, were quite impressive just to see the volume of people that were super interested in that topic and that, the number that were, um, participating in that survey. So I should have something back to you shortly.
And the only reason I bring that up is because it gives us, it gave me an indication of what, uh, the public out there is looking at as far as if we have to reduce services somehow, or is it going to cost us more money to keep the services we have? They're willing to do that in that specific case. So.
There was some interest in possibly going to every other week, but for the most part, um, they seem to understand that it does take money to provide these services. So it'll be interesting to see exactly how that all shook out. But, uh, yeah, people seem to understand that, you know, they, they definitely want those services to continue.
Thank you.
So, so it sound, I've heard from everyone save one. I'd really like to hear what Mr. Burton has to offer, if you would be willing to share.
Which specifically would you like to know? Which order?
The answer.
Priorities? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I believe, uh, Councilman Lamb's question was, which ones would you cut? So.
So, that's an interesting question because you're looking at the priorities only on this paper. And I'm saying we have priorities across the city that we can look at, not just this paper. But if we're looking at the priorities in this paper, I agree strongly with what Councilman Jacob is saying, that the one-time ones should not be included in there. Those should be paid for separately. And as we talk about the items for the unforeseen projects, the council used to have a budget called contingency funds for those purposes. And then the council would approve payments to those specific items that were unforeseen. And there would be some money set aside and we could decide if it was appropriate and how much was appropriate to do that. Basically, we have sort of had that. When we have our, our reserve, we could use that as a contingency to a degree, but we don't want it to drop down below the five percent. So it would be better to have some money set aside for that. So I'd be willing to, those last items on there, the last four or five, which I don't, the last four, I don't think are much of a discussion. I don't think those should be included in tax increases. I want to clarify how on the cemetery, though, as one who voted for the expansion of the cemetery, I think that's appropriate for the city to provide that service, particularly for city residences. But I don't think there should be a tax increase to pay for that. I think that should be paid for out of the funds we collect by people who use the cemetery and have it self-sustaining instead of having everybody use it for the taxes to pay for that. And then use the money to do that, with the exception of those people who are indigent and not able to take care of that. We could provide a plot for them. But I think the others should cover that. And I think we could work in a way to do that and have a scaled system that's one rate for residents of the city and a higher rate, extremely higher for those who are not in the city, that would help cover that. So I don't think that should be included in that at all. And I totally agree with everybody that our perception is important for the growth of the city. So that's why my original response was not cutting anything on parks. And I think, and including keeping economic development going is extremely important because that's where our future income's going to come from, particularly if his business is industrial, residential, doesn't do it, commercial and industrial does. If we just continue to grow residentially, we're going to have to have higher tax increases more frequently because that would be the drain on our finances. But if we can get industrial and commercial and resident, I'm sorry, retail business in there, that's what's going to bring that and, and cover that for us and, and make it so we don't have to have tax increases as frequently or as large amount. And that's why I, I would like to see us focus on economic development items. And I think that should be a highest priority. If we just remain a bedroom community, our taxes will continue to skyrocket. But if we can come a self-sustaining city, that would take our economic development and put some priorities on there.
Thank you. I really like what he said as far as having it be a council contingency fund. That I could support. That way, those that are in charge of the budget would be charged with, because we're the ones, ultimately, when staff makes decisions, we're the ones that get hung up to dry for your decisions. So, um, and that makes it really hard. It's like when your kid does something wrong and then you get the neighbor coming and yelling at you. My first response is, child! Um, but I really can't, there's nothing I can do because it's not fair to Mr. Brickie if Brian does something that I get on Mr. Brickie because he didn't do it. So I can inform him of what occurred, but that's all. So I really like that idea because some of the expenses, clearly I have trust issues with currently.
How much would you suggest be in the council contingency?
I probably wouldn't have any clue, Mayor, but I mean, the hundred and fifty thousand is a good place to, to look at.
The, the amount that was previously was about a thousand dollars a council member. So, uh, it was as high as seven thousand at one point.
Well, that doesn't allow for much.
No, ma'am.
That fixes a wall.
But I would, I.
But I would, I guess what I'm saying is, I would be okay if the hundred and fifty was something that council approved, what came out of there. But to just say, sure, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do whatever you all think is good? I'm very nervous about that.
And, and just to clarify, if someone behind me makes a mistake, you see me, it's my fault. It's my problem. As the city manager, it's my issue to deal with. So please come see me. Um, that's the way our government's been designed. You, I, I'm, I'm preaching to the choir. You know that. Um, I did want to make, uh, just a quick comment. The mayor indicated the, uh, SCBA's, if we remove that, there currently is a grant fund requested for the entire twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two. But we can't qualify for that grant unless we show it to actually fund it. So if we remove it, the grant folks look at us and say, you're, you're not funding this.
And that grant, if I'm not mistaken, that grant is for like, uh, two hundred thousand dollars or something like that. And this was only the difference of that.
That's correct. So that amount needs to stay in, um, so that we can get the entire amount. Before, uh, Councilman Lamb leaves, did we address your issues?
I'm good.
Okay.
You guys can stay till ten.
Hey, you can watch us on YouTube.
That's true. Or Facebook. Just call in.
Eric has a comment.
Um, I, I think regarding back with the council contingency, uh, discussion, it's appropriate to point out that as of right now and in your tentative budget, you do have thirty thousand dollars in your council contingency line a, as it stands now.
I have a, I have a quick question, not on contingency, but when we approved the tentative budget the other night, we made a couple of changes to it, including the, the legal department software thing and a couple of other things that were changed. And I thought there was a good chunk of one-time green sheets that went into that as well. I know we did like rodeo arena, um, improvements for shade and, and stuff for rodeos. Um, but there was a good chunk of one-time funds approved. Is there a list of those? I mean, I know it's in the notes probably somewhere, but.
Uh, yeah, we, I, I'll have to find it. That, that'll take some searching.
I would hate to double, double allocate money to this, something that we've already approved funding for. Um, which, something tells me some of these items were on there, like the fire department SCBA's I could have sworn was on there. So, I mean, it, it might not have been, but I, a couple of these look really familiar. And I, that might be a reason.
A reasonable concern. I just, I don't want to leave you thinking we won't address that. We'll address it this week. Our, um, is there anything else we need to discuss in this particular budget meeting? This is just a, a workshop. You know, it's prior to the actual truth and taxation meeting we're going to hold on the fourteenth. So if there's, if, if there's nothing more that really council or staff wants to talk about. But there might, that might be helpful to just clarify. On the evening of the fourteenth, at six PM, that's when the public's advised that they can come and make comments. Um, I would anticipate, uh, that the council will follow its existing rules. That's a three-minute comment. I didn't anticipate any cutting off of like numbers. Traditionally, uh, there was been a timeframe of no more than forty-five minutes allocated. I understand that's an unspoken timeframe. That's about fifteen people. I suspect wholeheartedly there may be more than fifteen people. Uh, I have anticipated that and shared with the staff that we're going to allow everyone to talk who wants to talk. Is that, uh, an accurate statement from the council? And to do that, um, I think I'd like to prepare in advance to tell them, because now that we're streaming, tell them, we're going to have them write something down that says their name. We don't want to put addresses out or phone numbers attached to their statements, their names. Uh, they can write it down on something and we'll collect that later. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, one, one additional.
They should have to write it down, right?
They're supposed to, but they don't always. But we'll work on that.
I don't think it's been clear. I, I think we need to be a little more clear on when we say we would like them to write down their name and contact information when they come up there.
Your mic's not on.
And just say their name.
Um, one, one thing in addition to that, though, is we do have a council meeting next week on the eighth. There's a public comment period. I'd like to see on our website, on that truth and taxation page, it says that they can only come on the fourteenth to talk about taxes. They can talk about it on the eighth during citizen comments as well.
Absolutely. I'm not excluding that.
I'd just like to, I'd like to add that to the, to saying that we will have a meeting on the eighth, a regular council meeting. There is a citizen comment period. If you want to come talk about taxes on the eighth, knock yourself out. Would love to hear you.
Did you all have a chance to see our taxation page? Are there any changes that you need or want? We can add the additional statement on there to include August eighth at, uh, six PM. Um, anything beyond that?
I think it's nice. Good job.
Yeah, it's good. I, I just really like that idea because I, I want them to understand it. And I'd rather hear it a week before so that I can process it and research anything I need to research. So if we can really convey that, that would be awesome.
And in two thousand and twelve, when they did the tax increase, you were here, right? Still, Kim? They held several public hearings and they held not just here. They were, they did one at the fire station out at Jordan Landing. They held several with the express purpose of saying, hey, let's get as much input as we can on this. You know, in order to justify what, whatever action we take, we've justified it because we've made maximum effort to hear from as many people as possible. Um, probably should have said something about that sooner. But, but, uh, at lea, at the very least, we can mention that on the eighth, you know, there's, there's another option. In fact, we could even put it on the agenda as a public hearing about, you know, receive public input about truth and taxation, blah, 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 whatever, about property tax budget, yada, yada. So.
I did notice that Melanie did put out their draft budget, I mean, draft agenda for that meeting. So if it's still early enough, we could do that. That would be good. And in answer to your question as for how many speak, I think that's totally appropriate. If they're going to come to talk to us, I think we ought to take the time to listen to what they have to say. As for the three minutes, personally, I would like to see that go away. I think that timer makes people think, oh, I've still got another minute and a half. I can keep talking. I think some people talk longer because they look at that timer and see that they have three minutes. I would like to see that gone and then let the mayor make the judgment of if they're just rambling or if they actually have something to say. He can call them on it and, and cut them off and tell them their time is done. But I think that would be very seldom that that would happen. I think most people are respectful and we'd be able to have them say what they have to say.
You should watch the LA City Hall's public comments. Um, they have no rules and the mayor has to continually cut people off. Now, I realize that where West Jordan and LA are two different animals. I hope we never get to that type of setting, but I appreciate and understand the councilman's request. Thank you.
Well, I was going to make a motion if everybody's done. But I, I would do want to say before I make the motion that I appreciate the study session. This has been, I think, very, very helpful. So that's my, my two cents, but I'm going to move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you. Now, wasn't this work miss, meeting exciting? Isn't that fun to work together?